Good evening, welcome to the July Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. I'm Rick Mason, our principal.
[laughing]
I'm board president. And our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. And if you're viewing, looking on TV, you'll see that we're in the council chambers again, while the renovation is taking place at the high school. So we'll be here for a little while yet. I'm gonna, let me see, verification of meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on June 26th, and it was also posted at the Lake Mills Library, the Bank of Lake Mills, and the post office. And then it was placed on the website.
Okay, good. So I'll call the meeting to order. And can we rise and do the pledge of allegiance? Flag's behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there are any, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the agenda, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. Board reports, Mr. Temprio.
The work going on at the high school is in two portions, the addition and remodeling at the high school building, and then the athletic field. The work in the high school itself, the majority of the remodeled areas have been, the interior partitions and other finishes have been gutted. The new partition walls are in the process of being constructed, metal stud and drywall. The rough plumbing for the waste down in the former vocational wing is being done. The foundations have been poured for the addition, and so that work is moving along quite nicely. There's been an awful lot of earthwork going on down at the athletic field, and unfortunately they have found some unstable soil, which is gonna require some remediation. We have a meeting tomorrow with the designing engineers, with the people doing the soils testing, the construction manager, probably a couple of people off the street, and I think we'll try to figure out where we go from there.
Okay, good. Thank you. Administrative reports, Mrs. Brockert.
All right, I'm gonna start off by just doing some highlights with the 2018-19 school year. We just finished our fiscal year, and we still have some expenses coming in, so I won't have everything finalized till the end of July, when our auditors will be here. But just, we did have a better year than I had anticipated, and some of it is because we received additional funds through open enrollment, partially because of the JDI program. But then on the other hand, when you look at our expenses, those expenses did go up too, because that's money in and out. We took on a lease for a copier that wasn't originally planned, so that's additional revenue, the lease portion, as well as the expense portion, the debt of that lease. We also received some funding, additional funding from E-Rate that wasn't originally planned, because we didn't find out for sure that we received those funds until like March. And then we also got some Medicaid payments from 1617 and 1718, so those were some additional revenues. Our expenses, some of the instructional areas had gone up, except for the undifferential curriculum, so you'll see that's some revisions in the budget. And then the other major expense change was because of our WAN, our wide area fiber project. Again, we didn't know if that funding was gonna go through, so we didn't plan the expense, just like we didn't plan the revenue. So those are the highlights with the increases, changes in the budget that I'm asking you to approve later tonight, and then that will get published in the paper. I also, just under my report, included the 2019-20 budget, which was sent to the newspaper for posting for our annual meeting, as well as a little more detail for the budget for your information, which will be presented at the annual meeting by function. And just to remind people, maybe Pam has this in her report too, but the budget hearing's at seven o'clock, and the annual meeting's at 7:30 on July 22nd, and it'll be in this building.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
Good evening, I hope this is the right microphone. So even though it's summer, we are moving forward already into next year, wrapping up some of our scheduling things. We are, I appreciate all the board support in the hiring you've done so far. We have one position left to hire for, and that would be the secretary-to-position at the middle school, so we will be looking at potentially setting up interviews for next week for that. The closing date for applications was, is midnight tonight. We are also working hard on some fifth grade transition pieces. We did a lot in the spring to kind of figure out what the differences were between fourth grade and fifth grade. We've already had one parent night, we will have another parent night for parents in the fall, but in the interim, coming up with all sorts of systems and processes that reflect a little bit more of what the elementary looks like, now that it's a new building and the kids are kind of used to those processes. It's been a bit of a change, so we're working on some of those things. Also, you should have gotten my first read for my handbook in your packet. The highlighted gray pieces are the ones where I've made significant changes, other than maybe a grammar or punctuation error. Any questions for me?
Questions at all? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, elementary school principal.
Good evening, just a few updates. This past month, I've had the opportunity to participate in a couple of professional development opportunities. The Principal Academy in Waterloo, which we went over some legal updates that impact schools, and also enhancements to Y- Dash, which is the warehouse for our assessment data at the state level, so things that we can use with our leadership teams to be able to help with our goal-setting for the coming year. I also participated in the Edgerton Leadership Academy, talking about longevity of leadership and mentoring aspiring leaders into the profession, and how we keep people engaged and excited about leadership. Our school, the elementary school, continues to be a great place. We've had a school tour from Iowa. We had a school district come to visit us and be able to tour all of the sustainability features and the educational features of our building. So five years later, we are still a place that people want to come to visit to get ideas on how to build their future schools. I also had an interview with UW Stevens Point about the green ribbon process, and they wanted to know more about what we did five years ago and continue to do with things like our school garden and our environmental education curriculum, and how we're helping our students to learn and grow, and then how we can also be advocates and kind of a lighthouse for other schools in the state who want to become green ribbon schools. And then a couple of things around, we have Read Around Town that's going to be happening for our students and families tomorrow at 1:00 at the elementary school on the playground. This is our second summer event. The intent is just to keep reading, exciting, and going over these summer months to prevent summer slide for our students. And finally, we had a planning session with Playworks. They are the company coming in to help us with recess next school year, so we went over what the schedule will look like. They will be working with each of our classrooms once a month, providing classroom-based instruction on how to utilize the playground, how to solve conflict, and how to get along and have teamwork out on the playground. You have the copy of my student handbook, so if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or email at any time. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Silverwood, Director of Student Services.
Good evening. We started summer school session two today, so kids switched classes. Some kids stayed in the same classes, some kids switched classes, lots of opportunity, lots of fun, and swim lessons started today. So we are very thankful for the beautiful, beautiful sunny day that we had today to start in the water. And the kids were having a lot of fun splashing around when I was down there today, so lots of fun stuff. Tonight, you have before you the Academic and Career Planning Guide that every district is required to have as part of their plan. And what, basically what this does, the state requires us to start educating students about career choices, really starting strong in sixth grade. We're supposed to go back earlier, and we do. We start educating kids about careers in kindergarten. But in sixth grade, they start a program, they have started a program called Career Cruising. Career Cruising is fading away, and the state has adopted Zello. And I think they were all originally the same company, they just changed, so the academic career plan has changed to reflect the changes of Zello. And Brian Lynn Scott, and Colby Shoemaker, and Diane Sweeney all had input into this new adapted plan, and it really focused what the larger group did two years ago, and now just adapting it to what is necessary with the new Zello program. So many of you participated in portfolios at the end of the year last year with seniors, and they were required to have a little bit of the Career Cruising choices in there. What was their career match? What is your interest inventory? How do you learn? Those types of things, that will still stay there, it's just now called Zello. So different, different things. You also have the assessment schedule attached in your board documents for the following year. It seems a little shorter this next year, because we did cut out a couple things and fine-tuned a couple things, so it was really kind of nice. We didn't want to make sure we're not over-assessing, but getting the right information that we need to make sure kids are growing and learning, really important. And later on tonight, you will have the list of standards to adopt, as is required by the state every July. So what is put together in that standards are the standards that we use to write our curriculum and base our curriculum on, and for every situation, they are the Wisconsin State standards. So they're all available, and as soon as you adopt them, I will update it on our webpage, but they're also available on the state webpage.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Mrs. Strike, District Administrator.
I just wanted to mention this evening that attached is the end-of-the-year nursing report, and that is a really comprehensive report that Toni Zastro puts together each year, so you can see all the stats about what she does, and all those kinds of things. If you have any questions, you can see that the scope of her work is very, very large. It's not putting on Band-Aids or giving ICE, that's not her task at all. And you can see that reflected in that year-end report. I'm gonna yield some time to Ms. Brown, wanted to just share one report with you.
I apologize that I wasn't officially on the agenda, but I wanted to give you an update. You know that we started our partnership with Oregon Mental Health Services this past spring. We actually started in April, and so I have some updated numbers that I wanted to share with you. Our therapist has seen 10 students, eight at the elementary level and two at the middle school. We have had 17 referrals to see them. Some of the referrals are holding off until August to start closer to the school year. All of the students' parents have been in contact with Oregon Mental Health, and from those 10 students, he has had 37 sessions between those students, so I thought that that is quite a large number there. I was really happy to see that. Some of the goals, as we're looking to expand that program for next year, is an additional therapist to come in as well, to help serve our students, and to implement an integrated model, so to work with the teachers and the counselors directly on the students that they are servicing as well. They may attend some IEP or 504 meetings as requested, and then also to provide some additional training to our staff, and then hopefully to increase our referral numbers at the middle school and high school levels. Any questions?
Questions?
Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, I think we're clapping. All right, Pam, are you done?
I am.
Okay. Next on the agenda is community input. We have a number of people, I understand, that want to speak. You have three minutes, state your name and your address for the record when you're up there, and Megan will be timing you. So who wants to go first?
Okay, Jim Bender.
My name is Jim Bender, address N-8201 County Road G in Lake Mills. President Mason, board members, thank you for taking the time. Over the past year, I'm one of the coaches as part of the Lake Mills Basketball Club, and this is kind of at the end of the year one of the program. And one of the things that we've done in the last year is had a lot of conversations with other communities and other coaches about how they run their programs and what they've done. And the program now has had a lot more input from the varsity coaches coming on down, which I think is important for using the right style of coaching, the right nomenclature, right vocabulary, so we can really help the kids, both at their current level and then as they progress up through different grades. My, the son that I've been coaching is in sixth grade, and I was the coach this last year of that team. And I think one of the things that we've discovered here in the city is that we're still, while we've taken some big steps forward, and I think we've got some really great coaches that dedicate a lot of time to improving kids, there's still some friction about how the mechanics of the program are working. And I think the thing that we're here to address tonight is, some of that friction is limiting the ability for us to work a little bit more directly with the kids. And we don't want to miss opportunities for the students to have access to facilities, the students have access to the coaches, and the students to be able to access time together that may be off a registered scheduled time. So for instance, right now, we're charged from the rec department to get access to the facilities. That's unique from the schools that I've talked to, so Mount Horeb, Verona, Madison Schools, Edgerton, just coaches I've talked to real recently, were an outlier in that area, and that were charged to get access to it. As a registered coach, you get your background check done, you're given a key to do it. You're really not allowed to come off the schedule, if it's not on a schedule, to get an impromptu couple hours in the gym to work with the kids. It's not really convenient at this point to do that. That's really an outlier. Most of the varsity coaches and parent coaches that we've talked to from around the area really encourage their coaches if there's open time. Obviously, if there's something scheduled in the gym, you're not gonna get access to that, but if the gym's open and the kids want to get together, the coaches are encouraged to go open up the gym and let the kids practice, shoot, do whatever they're gonna do, supervised, obviously. But those are just a couple of things where I think we want to start a conversation, because we've taken, as I said before, I think a pretty strong step forward in providing some really good opportunities for the kids. I know this last year, both the fifth grade and the sixth grade team, the way that we've revamped the practice schedule, we saw really good improvement for all of the kids, from top to bottom. They were all just performing much better at the end of the year. We want to continue that kind of progress, and so we just want to start a dialogue to make sure that we recognize what's working, and that if there's some friction areas, we start a conversation and maybe find some solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next.
Ryan Benish.
Hi, Ryan Benish, N-6290 Corth Highlands Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The reason I'm here is kind of to change the process for our kids for Lake Mills. I coached at the high school, I've coached for eight years as a varsity assistant, and before that, I was nine years as the varsity head coach in Watertown, and coaching at other levels below that for nine years. For a total of 17 years, I've taught and coached. We have an outstanding district here, but we also have areas of weakness, and one that Jim had mentioned. The topic covered tonight seems to be a weakness in comparison to other districts. Hopefully, an acknowledgement takes place in the near future, and a collaborative approach to improve the process follows, so we can improve the current, improve the current culture that exists today. I'm here tonight to request that we no longer charge our youth basketball feeder programs, or any other Lake Mills feeder programs, which consist of all Lake Mills kids. Our head basketball coach recently received a bill for $350 for our basketball club youth practices over the winter. After contacting numerous schools, I have not found a school who charges their youth feeder programs. Secondly, we're requesting that we do not charge high school coaches, teachers, or volunteer youth coaches for checking out the gym or other school district facilities. Coaches, volunteer coaches, and teachers are willing to allow students to gain access so they can work on skills without a fee being attached, we believe. This directly benefits the Lake Mills School District Athletic Department also. Fees and lengthy scheduling procedures only have dissuaded usage of our facilities, which we have improved with three passing referendums in the past decade. Taxpayers are paying a considerable amount already for these facilities. Thirdly, we're asking for a streamlined checkout procedure that exists in near real time for coaches, teachers, and volunteer coaches from the School District of Lake Mills. Access is being hindered to unused facilities due to the processes that is damaging our students' ability to gain entrance and develop. Other school districts have commented that they can respond within five to 10 minutes, and if you are willing, we can share those school districts with you and their processes. If this topic is reevaluated, I'm asking that a collaborative team approach where voices are listened to and valued takes place. Please involve your head basketball coaches and other coaches within the athletic department, our high school principal, and our new athletic director. Together with central office staff and this board, they can help create a facility uses plan that works for the athletic department and is similar or better than other districts. The experience of our coaches, new AD, and principal regarding running successful athletic programs can only add knowledge and experience to those who work at the central office. As far as I understand, most of the central office have never been a head coach or performed athletic director duties. Unless you've performed these duties, it would be difficult to understand the topics that we might be raising today. Lastly, we're asking for a change in board policy which allows the rec department adult activities to bump out Lake Mills children from facilities. Our current policy, board policy, did not allow kids from Lake Mills to practice or gain access to facilities for a number of years due to adult rec. Many of those adult rec programs consist of non-citizens who are not taxpayers in Lake Mills. Okay? Time is up. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Next.
Mr. Hayes.
My name is Chad Hayes, I live at 404 College Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I just kind of want to piggyback on what Ryan and Jim spoke on. I guess I'm just requesting you to reconsider the charging of the youth basketball feeder teams. I myself have been a varsity boys' basketball coach at four different schools in three states, and at none of those places were our youth and feeder programs ever charged a rental fee. I fully understand if a team is hosting a tournament or some kind of fundraiser, surely they should be charged. But I feel like, right now, in our district, we have numerous kids at the intermediate and high school levels that are extremely motivated to get in the gym and work on their skills, develop chemistry together, and bonds that are gonna last them a lifetime. Same as our coaching staff, we have a lot of dedicated, willing coaches that will open the gyms up for our kids and not ask for anything in repayment. These are all positives to me, and I think we should reward our kids on that and not charge them when they have a lot of choices that they could be making, not all of them positive. I feel like, right now, with all the work, all the adults have been putting in, and how motivated the kids are, that they should be able to get in the gym and work on those skills. I currently serve as the Dean of Students, Athletic Director, and Recreation Director in neighboring Johnson Creek, and we also do not charge our youth and feeder basketball teams to use the facility. Again, we do charge if we need to for fundraising, those type of things, but any adult that has demonstrated that they are capable of working with kids has the opportunity to get in the gym when it's available. So I would just ask that you reconsider that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Mr. Litcher.
President Mason, Superland Strike, members of the board, I just here to reiterate maybe a little-
Name and address.
I forgot, what is it?
Do you know protocol?
Do I? How does it start? John Litcher, 1011 Forestview Court, in Lake Mills, Wisconsin. And I'm coming here with maybe a little bit different perspective of the situation, because I know that there are pressures on this board, and certainly this administration, as relates to situations and costs to the 10 Fund, and I realize that that's part of the issue that these gentlemen are addressing. But I think the fact of the matter is, is that the cost, if in fact those costs that they're reiterating as far as for the youth basketball programs, is such a small, small percent of the total receipt revenue that you take in over a course of a 12-month period of time, that that could somehow be absorbed. And as a result, the activity that you provide your young people, and I say that in its collective sense, because you are serving the young people of this school district, and these gentlemen are also in a volunteer capacity, serving the young people of this community, and you both want the same outcomes. And I think if you can somehow see clear of providing that type of latitude in respect to cost charging, I think it'd be a benefit to you, I think it'd be a benefit to the students, and I think it'd be a benefit to everybody that volunteers their time and effort. And as I said, I had a pleasure of talking with Wendy today, and she's very knowledgeable and helpful in refreshing some of my memories about the 10 Fund and 80 Fund. But you do have some outlets, and you do somehow have some abilities, I think you have to possibly review them and see how they better best to be used in transferring some of those costs, if in fact it's detrimental to the 10 Fund. So I respect your pressures, I respect the pressures of the finances of the school district, but I also think that the young people, the young boys and young ladies, and young boys and girls that participate in this deserve that opportunity at the least possible cost, and I guess I would hope that you could absorb that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else?
Mr. Nordby.
Jason Nordby, 513 West Lake Street. You guys have already heard from these guys, so I'll keep this really short and sweet and to the point. I think that what I'm for is common sense measures. I think it can only be a positive thing to do policies and procedures that encourage parents and community members to want to volunteer their time to help the youth of the community. As someone who volunteers a lot of his time, I think Ms. Thompson probably doesn't think I have a real job, because I'm over at that school in the gym so much with kids. I know personally, I've spent hundreds of dollars to have the gym open for kids, and it doesn't affect me, but I would think that that might discourage some parents from wanting to get involved, if they know every time they use that gym, they're gonna have to pay $10 or whatever the cost is. It adds up pretty quickly. The second thing is, I think it's about encouraging the kids to want to participate. You know, I've had numerous examples of where we've had a practice scheduled for outside, the gym is sitting empty inside, we've tried to move the practice inside, and because we didn't follow a certain waiting period over the course of a couple of days, we couldn't just do the common sense thing of moving to a space that is open. So I think it's about encouraging and giving and setting up policies and procedures to get people to volunteer their time, and allowing the kids the opportunity to be active. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
That's all I have.
That's all? So, community, thank you for your input, we appreciate it. And moving on to the consent agenda, these are the items under the consent agenda. Approval of June 17 regular board minutes, approval of June 17 Finance Committee proceedings, approval of vouchers and invoices, approval of treasurer's report, and approval of support staff letters of assignment for the 1920 school year. Does anyone on the board want to pull one of those out separately? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the consent agenda, any questions or anything on that? All right, roll call, please.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Action items, approval of budget adjustments for the 1819 school year.
I highlighted this during my report earlier, and also we went through it in a little more detail during the finance committee meeting, so I'm just asking that you do this annual budget adjustment for 2018-19.
I'll move the board approve the budget adjustments to the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the budget adjustments, any comments or questions on those? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Lake Mills Area School District Employee Handbook for the 1920 school year.
So last month, I went over a pretty extensive list of some technical changes, as well as some substantive changes, and all of that is outlined in that 23-page document. We've had some time to talk about this, if you have any questions, please let me know. And just a reminder that there needs to be two extensions in this this evening.
I move the board approve the 2019-2020 Employee Handbook as presented.
Second. Moving to second to approve the employee handbook for the 19, or the 2019-20- Moving second to approve the employee handbook for the 19, or the 20192020 school year. Questions? All right, roll call, please.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Abstain.
John Delaney.
Abstain.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes three to two. All right, approval of student academic standards for the 1920 school year.
This is what Ms. Severud just talked to you about. If you have any questions, she's still in the audience to answer those questions.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the student academic standards as presented for the 20192020 school year. Second.
Moving second to approve the student academic standards for the 1920 school year. This is an annual requirement by the DPI that we do this. Any questions or comments on those?
I was just wondering where to access the standards themselves. Are those in those section links on this document?
Funny, I don't speak. Typically, I have posted on our website.
They're on? Okay.
On the DPI, they have a whole section, not very.
Okay.
I try to link them, not to the web, on the DPI, these changes. I try to link them to PDFs.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
David Radel.
Aye.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract for the 1920 school year.
So, we just completed a pretty extensive process of looking for an assistant principal for the high school and athletic director as combined position. There was an interview process with a team. I interviewed two finalists, three finalists, and then a finalist was also brought to the board for a meet and greet last week. So, we're really pleased to present to you all the information for Mr. Steven Considine. And all of his information is attached there. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff contract to Mr. Steven Considine as the high school, as high school's assistant principal and, and director of athletics for the 20192020 school year, and welcome him to the Lake Mills Area School District family.
Second.
Moving second to approve a new staff contract for the assistant high school principal and director of athletics. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously approval of professional staff resignations.
Unfortunately, we did receive one of those resignations this week for Ms. Mary DeJackamo. I'm saying that in case you're not sure how to pronounce that, DeJackamo. She's been the physical therapist here in our district for 13 years.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Mary DeJackamo, physical therapist, and thank her for her services to the students and community of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moving second to approve the staff resignation of Ms. DeJackamo. Any questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
We had two gifts from the Tyranina Ladies Club this month.
Mr. Radel?
I move the board accept the following gifts from the Tyranina Ladies Club, and thank them for their continuous support of the students of Lake, of the Lake Mills Area School District. $150 to the Lake Mills Elementary School's garden and $350 to the Lake Mills Elementary School's cultural, cultural diversity club.
Second.
Moving second to approve the gifts. Any questions on those?
Thank you.
Again, thank you to the community for their generous support. Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
John Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Upcoming board agenda items.
Just a reminder that we'll be here in this council chambers on July 22nd for the annual meeting. And that's at 7:00 and 7:30. And then, our next meeting will be August 12th. At that time, we hope to have new staff recommendations for you for secretary chair two at the middle school. We have two paraeducator openings at the elementary school and now the physical therapy opening as well.
All right. Any other agenda items anybody thinks of that we might have? Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
And moved and second and all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.